Recording in progress.
Good evening, welcome to the board meeting. Would you stand and join me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We appreciate you taking some time out on a beautiful summer night to join us. Is there a free roll call? I'm guessing yes.
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Okay, get the agenda rolling. Resolve the Board of Education approve the agenda. The August 4th, 2025, regular Board of Education meeting. Tom, Jeremy, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we do have a couple of votes we need to administer at this time. We'll turn it over to our first chair.
Yes, so the new Minister Sam Sherwood. Raise your right hand or repeat after me. I do solemn swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully dischance the deuce of the Office of Bolensville Central School District Board of Education Member according to the best of my ability. Our Ex officio student board member Megan Franco. Raise your right hand. I do solemn swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully dischance the deuce of the Office of Bolensville Central School District Board of Education Student Member according to the best of my ability.
Well, congratulations, both of you, and we move on to our correspondence. Board activities at this point. On July 31st, there was a school conference at, or a school law conference put on by of our, one of our legal advisors for our PRINSA. And the number of people who tended to be included, I guess, I thought it was well done as usual. The, we moved right along, covered a number of topics. And of course, talked quite a bit about New York state changes. There was a discussion about the New York state law against cell phones in class now. It's essentially a bell-to-bell ban, and I think probably people are aware that we told students to, you know, keep it in your locker during the day. But there's a number of ways people are addressing that. But I don't know, any other highlights you've got from the law conference?
Overall, the legal updates, it was pretty unique. I think the difference between some of the federal changes and how that impacted, maybe won't impact New York as much because of, you know, rules and regulations we have here. But that was just helpful, and I think for those board members that weren't able to attend. I had the MSBA convention in October, they're looking at law conference update. So certainly encourage folks to attend that.
And also, the New York State School Boards held a New Year's ship and education event. What, was that Friday and Saturday you went, Wayne? I understand you said that you'd covered a lot of material.
Yes, so it was all day Friday and then half the day on Saturday. But there was a lot of different general sessions that everyone attended, and then some breakout sessions. I guess some of the highlights would be, trying to find the main ones. They had the State Education Department panel discussion. The one on Saturday morning was navigating an uncertain financial future. But the main event was the big one in the afternoon. Strengthening school governance, students at the table, which we had members of our team that were presenting, and it was very well received. A lot of people there, had a lot of questions after the presentation. Also, there was two other school districts there, just trying to prepare everybody for the new law that all schools have ex officio members, which was on July 1st. So, but yeah, a lot of information, a lot of networking, and it was really good. Do you have questions? I have itinerary and stuff here if you want to throw in there, and I emailed them out. Don, how do you feel about it?
Evie was about as juiced up as I've ever seen her. She loved the environment, she loved reading, all kinds of, you know, people were curious about the same things she's been curious about for, you know, as long as she was on the floor. And she had absolutely nothing great things to say. It was a great experience, great learning experience, great, just, you know, having the opportunity to sit and participate in engagement with schools, fantastic. So, thank you, Joe.
She really made our district work. I mean, she made a show. Certainly Andrew and I were there, responded to questions, but she really took the show, and I mean, it was impressive.
And for them to do that, and for, I mean, I don't know, there's a couple hundred people in there to stand and, you know, I guess, sit in front, in that panel setting in front of 300, 350 people, like, it takes a lot of, I guess, confidence to do that, and she did really well. It was very cool. All three of those, all the students.
Just, so anybody doesn't notice, Don's daughter Evie was our school, our student representative last year. And we were asked to participate in a panel discussion because New York State passed a law that this is the, this is the first year, starting July 1, that students are required to be members of boards in all, roughly 720 schools in New York State. We have had student representatives since 2012 or 2011? 11? 2011, yeah, okay. And I guess, believe it or not, I was really surprised, there were only about 240, 250 schools that currently had student reps, but we've had great experiences with student reps. And that's going to continue, from what I hear, so, great. Anything else? We've got a list of upcoming meetings here. I don't know if there's anything more than anybody wants to talk about this time? Okay. Then we'll move on to our student report, and maybe we'll, a lot of presses with Megan is, but Kristi, Kristi Pavetta, who is attending virtually, and you have already met, I know. And Kristi said that you've been very well prepared already, and looking at board docs and stuff. But Kristi, you want to talk a little bit, and then we'll turn over to Megan?
Oh, I'd be happy to. Megan and I were able to have a great conversation over the weekend, just by way of introduction. The board asked me to be Megan's school board mentor, which I was happy to do. Megan seems like a really wonderful, smart and skilled young lady, so we're very lucky to have her participating on the board this year. And she's done a lot to prepare herself for this first meeting. She had some questions about the format of our meeting, and how things run, and what her role should be, which we were happy to discuss. And I'm looking forward to her first presentation tonight.
Great, well, thank you, thank you. So, Megan, I'm guessing that school hasn't been in session, you don't have too long a report tonight. But maybe you just want to tell us about why you want to be part of the board, and some of your expectations, and anything else you want to, you want to talk about, okay?
I've just been looking forward to being part of the board, just considering that I care so much about our goals and community. And I care a lot about connecting the students with our community, and communication between students and the community. And I also have a huge interest in learning, in what you guys run things, and what you guys go for different things. So I'm very, very excited to be part of this.
Great. Moving along then, it's time for public participation. I don't know if we have these speakers tonight, we do certainly invite public participation. We do ask that the limit to roughly three minutes. But do we have any requests to speak? No, no, okay. That was quick. Okay. The first item is approval of consent agenda. Resolve Board of Education approve the consent agenda pursuant to the attached. Don? Tom? Looking on here, I think, probably everybody's familiar with the instructional, the little big updates there. I will call to attention, we do have a facilities agreement for Fulton, is it Bell School?
Fulton City School District for use of their pool. Yeah, since our pool is under construction, we'll be using a Fulton pool.
And then, we do have the USRO agreement with Long Island County. I think we have a lot of understanding with Kedley Reed, do they have students who participate with us?
Yes. That's correct.
So, so they didn't have enough for a swimming team, they can participate with us. And then, since we're already the largest level, highest level of enrollment, it doesn't change our enrollment or anything. So, just a nice thing to do with somebody. And then, let's see, the Head Start agreement, do you want to just explain that briefly?
That's just for Head Start services. Last year, I believe we had any students take advantage of that program, given our universal pre-K program. But we do have the agreement with Head Start, if like a family moves in and wishes to go that route.
Any other, quick question, there's no cost associated there, right?
No, not for us, it's just.
And I have just one other question. The agreement for using the pool in Fulton City District. So, 10-second thumbnail, is that like, we're already bussing kids up the back, and we're the mechanics?
Yep, so we're bussing students for that season for the varsity. We are also, I think the board approved at a previous meeting, use of the YMCAT here for some of our modified practices. So this will cover a season where they do not have a team. So we'll bust students up, and that'll be their home site for contests and practices.
I just have a question on the instructional, the appointments with the help program. Is that still in effect until we're given official?
It's in effect until we're told otherwise, so that's a way for us to, in some ways, navigate around civil service so that we can attract quality candidates that maybe have more of the practical experience as opposed to the civil service test requirements. And so we can appoint folks using that helps category, and then they work through that probationary period, and then permit status.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Move on to both in, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item A? Is this, this is first reading, I guess, isn't it? Yeah, so, first reading for grade nine English honors book, is this, so, is this a optional? Or is this a read for English honors?
It's not on, is it? It's not working. It's yours. Does it work? Okay.
Show it now.
I got it. Yeah, so this will be a whole class read for English, regular English regions and English diet honors.
So, our policy then, first, this is our first read, so we'll go on that. Any, I guess, any questions at this time, or do people have a chance to review it yet or not? Okay, moving on. Item B. The Board of Education approve the naming of the field at Pelcher or Carroll Stadium after Carl San Polipo, teacher and coach pursuant to be attached. Jeremy? Tom? Okay, moved in second, and Joe, I think you've had a comment.
Yeah, just a quick statement here, a little bit about Coach San Polipo. So we couldn't be more pleased that the board is contemplating the naming of the field. And so I'd just like to read a quick statement here on behalf of the district in regard to Coach San Polipo. Carl San Polipo is known as a coach, a teacher, a mentor, and the dean of Section 3 high school football. As everyone knows, after nearly five decades of unwavering dedication to high school football and four decades of service as a teacher and a coach to the Bolensville Central School District, Coach notified us of his retirement after the 2024 season. Coach's legacy, both on and off the field, is one that has shaped generations of athletes, families, and communities. There is no fitting tribute than to name the field at Pelcher or Carroll Stadium in his honor. Coach San Polipo's career is nothing short of extraordinary. As a proud 1977 Syracuse University graduate, former Orange Football Letter winner, Coach San Polipo brought passion, discipline, and heart to every program he touched, both varsity football and unified basketball, to name a few. For the past 40 years, he has served as our head coach, following eight seasons in Syracuse Christian Brothers Academy. Over those decades, he became far more than a coach. He became a mentor, a father figure, and a guiding light for thousands of student athletes. Coach San Polipo's impact extends far beyond the scoreboard. He led our Bees to four Section 3 titles, but his greatest victories have always been in the relationships that he's built. Former players, many of whom now coach themselves, credit Coach with instilling in them integrity, accountability, and the power of perseverance. Coach was raised in a family of football. He grew up under the watchful eye of his father, a coaching legend in Western New York. And he's known for his no-nonsense style tempered by deep compassion. Coach San Polipo always expected his athletes to do the right thing and to treat people with respect. In retirement, Coach San Polipo remains devoted to service and staying connected in Bolensville, where he has spent all of his adult life. From Western New York, the manly field house, to Pelcher or Carroll Stadium, Coach San Polipo's story is woven into the fabric of not only New York's, but Bolensville's football tradition. His leadership, humility, and heart have left a significant mark on Bolensville and beyond. Coach, our district is grateful for your service, commitment to our community, and your dedication to our students. Naming the field at Pelcher or Carroll Stadium in honor of you is more than a tribute. It's a lasting symbol of excellence, leadership, and love for our school community. In just a few moments, the board's action will ensure that every time our Bees take the field, they will not, they will do so on the very ground shaped by a man, Coach Carl San Polipo, who gave us everything he had. Congratulations, Coach, and go Bees.
Okay. Probably should take a vote immediately. Those in favor? As opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Coach. So we're going to depart from our agenda in just a minute. Coach couldn't be here because of all things, he's working, right? You want to come forward and just say a couple of words?
Yes, I want to say a very couple. I just, I.
Just that right-hand click. There you go.
I would just like to thank everyone. If Carl was here, he'd be crying, so I'll cry for him. He's, we're very humbled as a family, and so appreciate this. No one could be more surprised than my husband, Carl. I just want to thank everybody here. This means the world to him. Thank our family. So I just want to say thank you so much for everything you've done for them.
Appreciate it. Many, many students appreciate all this. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
Joe, I believe they're planning something for the first home game. I don't know anymore than that. I'm sure there'll be details coming out, but anyway. Okay. We are on the dating business now, I guess, right? Resolve Board of Education approve the Bolensville Central School District tax levy and tax rates with this in 2025, 2026 pursuant to the attached. Wayne? Sam? Can you give us, just a real brief, Tiffany? This is the, this is the final, right?
Yes, that's correct. And our rate went from $16.82 cents per thousand true value to $15.04 cents. So it went down as we anticipated, and because our overall assessment's increased by $29.9 million, as you replied.
I'm sorry, was that $15.04?
Yes.
Very good news, and probably appropriate to point out that five years ago, the rate was $23.03, and I think $23.03 cents or something close to that, is over $23.03 per thousand. But as the tax basis has grown, and the school budget hasn't grown as much, the rate per thousand continues to come down. Unfortunately, that doesn't mean the taxes are lower because your assessment has gone up. But I would want to point out, though, that if we had been able to lower the per thousand, the tax would be a lot higher. So, you know, the yin and yang, I guess, but there's, hopefully, there's some good news. It's one of my, you used to say, to know when the most good. So there's some good in there, although I'm sure that doesn't keep your proper taxes from increasing necessarily. Okay. With that said, any other questions on this?
Quick question, and I don't know if we calculated this yet or not, so I might have a quick there. But do you know where we are in the revision cap?
Yeah, we are, we're at the cap.
Thank you, didn't have that on here. So this is a roll call vote, I guess.
Yes. Constance Bolt?
Yes.
Jeremy Kelly?
Yes.
Wayne Davison Jr.?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Donald Miller?
Yes.
Christina Pavetta?
Yes.
Sherwood? Yes. Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item D. Resolve Board of Education approve the reserve untransfer resolution pursuant to the attached. Both Wayne?
Second.
Jeremy? And on there, let me just put that up real quick. So, what's, what's going on is, when we have funds left over after the budget year, we can put those into reserves, like a savings account for the future. And what we are able to do is put some money into our capital improvement plan, or capital reserve, I should be properly saying, right, Joe? Which, we use the capital reserve to pay local costs on future building projects so that we do not have to increase taxes. And there's a few other small ones to see. Some is going into workers' comp, and a big one's a $5 million, million for capital reserve. And what's the other one? Taxerciory. Taxerciory is when somebody is, what, both of their taxes are looking for a decrease, which happens from some businesses from time to time. So that is being increased at the advice of our attorneys. Any other questions or thoughts on that? Hearing none, proceed to both those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E. Resolve Board of Education approve the updated Bolensville Central School District's multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, response to intervention plan. Motion, Sam?
Second.
Wayne? And who wants to do a brief explanation?
I'll start, if Kerry wants to add anything again. So, one of the things that we've been needing to do with our RTI plan, our response to intervention plan, is to update it to a multi-tiered system of support plan, which captures not just the academic interventions that we provide for students, but also the behavioral interventions that we provide, as well as the supports. So, what you'll see is a more interactive site. It's going to be located, it has its own tab on our webpage. And so, it's going to, the information will be much more accessible to families, to community, to our staff. And there's really nothing new that we've been doing in here. We've been doing it, it's just quantifying it and making sure that we've documented our process.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add, I think you did a great job explaining it, other than I agree. It's everything we've always done, it just captures it visually, I think, for everyone, that, you know, how does RTI fit into MTSS has always been kind of confusing for people, that MTSS is this umbrella that doesn't just include the academic piece with the social, which, well, the behavioral, the community partnerships, and the assessment and the data pieces that go into all of those things. And I think the way that the curriculum department has laid it out really makes it come to light and make it easier to understand.
Any other discussion questions?
I wanted to just recognize my appreciation for having the link there. The website is really terrific, it's full of information and details for parents. And I did have a question. Are there pathways from this process that would lead to a 504 plan or an IEP, should a particular student need increased intervention?
Yeah, so I think that's a great question. And all of those things, I think, the assessment pieces, especially the data-driven supports that are in there, are a couple of things, right? So there's always been some confusion about, if a student has a 504 or they have an IEP, where do they follow the RTI process? And RTI is a regular education initiative. And if you have a student with an IEP or 504, they still have access to all of those things and more within the realm of that. But there certainly are pieces within this interactive, you know, umbrella where if students are accessing those supports and not being successful, that certainly is information that we use along the way, whether it's a parent referral, a teacher referral, a committee referral, or just a meeting even for a student who's already identified and needing more support. Those are all, all things that go into that bigger picture.
Thanks.
Sam?
Other than the website, how would parents find out about this?
Well, hopefully, multiple avenues, right? So, my hope is that they're being discussed with the parents at IST meetings, at parent-teacher conferences, they're on RTI letters, on any orientation or community cafes. These are things that we should be being transparent about and should be obvious to parents that all of these supports are in place, and would be multiple links or places where they would get this information.
Any other thoughts? You both in, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item F. Resolve the Board of Education approve the award of approval bid pursuant to the attached. Tom?
Sam?
And I understand this is going to be a help to custodial and so they could get up and take care of stuff higher. And that was, you're showing the competitive bid right there. So. It was, I think, one bidder could meet specifications, am I correct? So, okay. But the winner does meet all specifications and is a little bit. Any other questions, thoughts? Okay, hearing none. Of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And G. Resolve the Board of Education approve the awards contract for 2023 sixty-three point nine million capital improvement project pursuant to the attached contingent upon successful completion of the contracts. Wayne?
Second.
Jeremy? Okay, so probably need a little more explanation on this one, I'm thinking. Joe, is this your failure there?
I can do some, yeah. So Siemens, that's going to be our access control for HVAC units and other systems within our building. So with the construction that's going on at Baker High School and at Ray as part of the sixty-three point nine, that's what that Siemens bid is for. The automation is all of our access controls and security video systems so that we have cameras across the district. And so that is the standardized company that we utilize for those services. And NEIS, I'm looking at Tiffany. That's the bleachers, right?
Ah, the casework.
Casework, yeah. Casework for the classrooms within Baker. So we're going through the New York State contract and that will help us significantly reduce some of the cost for all of the casework within the renovations at the high school.
And so just to be clear, this isn't, those three items don't total the sixty-three point nine. They're part of it. Do you have a breakout of how much each one of those are in there?
It's, so the NEIS is about one point five million. The automation is a hundred and thirty. Hundred and thirty-four million. And Siemens is a hundred and thirty-three million. Or a hundred and thirty-three thousand, sorry. Hundred and thirty-four thousand. One point five billion for the NEIS. So getting ahead of myself.
So, so yes, well, Joseph used these big numbers now. Anyway, but so when we reference the sixty-three point nine, that's the project in total. And this is a small part of it. And this has been approved by our architect, is embedded by our attorney. So we went through all the stamps, which is a normal process, I think, that's enough.
Correct.
Don?
So I'm interested in the financial process a little bit. Obviously, this isn't all coming out of our bank account. The state is involved in this. What's, is there any, I guess that might be, how does the state participate? Do they, do they take this agreement and approve it and say, here's what we send to the contractor? Does that flow through us? What's the process around that money?
So we originally spec the project, we were given state eight figures and how much AEP would give for the entire project. Separate each building based on how many able people live there. So essentially, what we do is we make sure we stay within our budgeted guidelines and that we get the project paid as much as possible. We also utilize a little bit of local share through our capital reserves. So at the end of the project, we have all of our expenditures within our budgeted allotment. And we send out that final report to the state and then they send us our aid.
Is there a period of time in there where we are covering a gap that the state will fill in later? In other words, is there, is there, do we end up accruing any liability for short-term interest along the way?
Yes. Yep. So throughout the construction project, we borrow accounts, short-term revenue. The annual label renewals where we fund the project and that's when the state will start paying their portion of state aid on project.
That's.
With aid on interest.
And our fiscal advisors take all of that into consideration as they put together all of this work.
So those interest costs are included in the project?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this particular one? Hearing none, we move to both of them, those in favor?
Aye.
I believe that's a roll call, I'm just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Tiffany.
Conspul?
Yes.
Jeremy Kelly?
Yes.
Wayne Davidson Jr.?
Yes.
Victor Jenkins?
Yes.
Donald Miller?
Yes.
Christina Pivato?
Yes.
And Sherri Schraven?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this next one's going to be a very hot topic. Resolve the Board of Education appoint somebody as a voting delegate and an alternate for the 2025 New York State School Board Association Annual Business Meeting to be held virtually on October 16, 2025. Now, I know that Jeremy and Sam did it last year. I know that probably Don did it the year before. He wants to fight him for that slot probably. Because this is a meeting, I can see. Schools, just to give a little more explanation. All the schools are invited by New York State School Boards to put in resolutions. And school boards through this voting process will pick several that they support to the legislature. And we have one in this year. We had one approved last year. So Jeremy and Sam got kudos for that. But the first time I, in my memory, submitted one had approved and now we've got another one in there. But I guess maybe we should ask for a volunteer here, or volunteers, and then we can plug some names in here.
I think it's fun to nominate people who weren't here, so I'd go with Andy or Lou, but I'm just going to.
Well.
I'll do it.
Okay. Sam? Anyone? And do we have a volunteer for alternate then?
Alter, you're not questioning about it.
Oh, okay, okay. So.
I did it my first year on the board and I enjoyed it. I mean, I know it's long, but it's interesting. It's very informative and very cool.
It is. It's interesting meeting. It's just, it is super, super long. It's, but it's. I'm curious. It says Monday, October, October 16. I'm looking at the calendar. This, no, it says virtually on October 16.
I got, I got it.
Oh. Sorry, I'm.
I would do it, but I'm teaching.
Oh, yes, I do see. I'm sorry, down here. Yeah, under the executive material. It's got, I'm pretty sure, it was a Thursday last year, I'm pretty sure. Because it's a Thursday before the conference begins, it gets to the 23rd.
It's October 16. We verified that date.
Okay. So we'll go back and do this appointment. Resolve the Board of Education appoint Sam Schraven as a voting delegate and Wayne Davidson as the alternate for the 2025 New York State School Board Association Annual Business Meeting to be held virtually on October 16, 2025. Don?
Second.
Wayne? Jeremy, you want to jump in on that?
If you want, Wilson's waiting up for the, to be voted in.
Okay, you want, okay. Okay, Jeremy? And I don't expect much discussion, so we'll move to both those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Okay. I. That the Board of Education approve the funding improvements in building future attendance zone reorganization, reconfiguration plan pursuant to the attached. Wayne? Sam? So there are, you remember with the construction, there could be some rezoning. This is nothing hard and fast at this point. It's just options. So we're not really making any decisions at this point.
So phase one and two, it's, this solidifies that so we can get through the construction. But when we think about long-term plans in phase three, which is 2034, the ways down the road, we have, the board will have at this point in time, three options to consider, an option A, an option B, and option C. So what this does is it lays the groundwork so that we can begin to, you know, make the transitions within our buildings. As you know, seventh grade will be moving to the main campus and will be relocating students from Eldon and that happens in 2028. And so we need to make sure that we're in a good place. So for the community, we've tried to do this in a way that minimizes the impact on our students so that when they're starting in a school, they're able to stay in that school. And so we have that reconfiguration with fourth grade and fifth grade moving to Ray Middle School. And then it gives the board time over the next several years to, again, contemplate what that final configuration looks like. Do we have a need at some point after 2034 to build a new school? Do we redistrict to meet the needs of where our population currently resides? Those are all conversations that will happen over the next several years.
Okay. Questions, discussion? So again, nothing really happens here until 28, or excuse me, until, yeah, 28. And that is just when Eldon's going offline. That's what major change there will be.
Yeah, just to clarify, so there's a phase in approach so, so that we're not starting students in Eldon and then having to transition them out. There's no UPK this year in Eldon. Some of the kindergarten sections have been reduced. And that will follow the way through until we hit 2028 when there are essentially, you know, two grade levels of students that will transition together from Eldon to Ray.
I think, you know, I just, it makes a ton of sense to think ahead like we are. And I think, you know, in terms of the building project approval to be as inclusive as it was for as long ahead as it is, and then to think through how to phase, change is inevitable. It's maybe a little bit overdue. And to be able to phase it the way we're phasing it and think ahead the way we're thinking ahead to give these options, it's completely necessary. And from what I can see, I think we're doing it in the least intrusive or at least disruptive way possible. But it has to happen. So, no, I think this is needed and I know change is tough for people, but as we continue to grow and have to make adjustments to the buildings and where the grades are, this is about the best way forward. I think we could have, we could have gone down, so.
Quick question. Option A for 2034, it's got the new school on the map. Then option A assumes that the new school is finished and is ready for use for 34, 35 grade.
Correct. Yeah, and that the community would support that given enrollment. And there's lots of steps that would have to happen between now and then. But, you know, with any new construction, new construction goes faster than the renovations that we're experiencing right now. So this is truly assuming that there's growth.
And that's exactly, because there are some logistics that's going to be here and there. But you touched on what I want to ask about. If we were to be, the plan is to be completed in fall of 34. Is, has anybody taken a look at stepping back from there? And when do we go to, the community would just, would we re-embodiment?
Yeah, we need to look at another project communication going somewhere between 2030 and 2031 to the public. It'll take about two years to build if we get to that point. But we can have a quick turnaround time from SED with the way that they approve projects now. So we believe there's enough time. As we said, even with this historic project that was passed, we're going to have debt continuing to come off over the next several years too. And we're going to have, we have the capital reserve that the board just authorized, you know, up to almost half from what the public approved in May. We're going to have other projects coming forward and if we can continue to utilize the capital reserves to offset the local share, you know, it's always good to have the voters weigh in on additional work because we know it's necessary.
And, you know, you need like the master's lesson on this, but. For the new construction, of course, the state's role, was the contention for this to be.
It's, we're going to, we're going to need to show the growth in order to get, or we're going to need legislators and senators in New York to get on our side and advocate with us in order to show the work. Historically, if you don't have the enrollment, they're not going to allow you. You have to be overcrowded, basically, and we're adding space. So part of the challenge for us over the next several years is going to be advocating in a way where we're showing that we're growing and hopefully we can put up a good case to get them to adjust the way that they're funding schools, especially when it comes to reconstruction, rebuild. And we'll continue to advocate, just like we did last year with our resolution that went forward with Ms. But that's still on the docket for them and we need those other advocacy groups to support the change and the shift in order to make all this work.
The reason I ask that question is because I suspect that we're going to have to have some friends help us with this. And once we talk about the core models and it doesn't work, I'm seeing.
Absolutely.
Okay, discussion, any, anything else on this? Proceed to both of them, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that is the completion of our business segment. We'll do the roundtable now and, right? And the first thing up there is the school supply drive. And Kiri, I imagine, is Kiri the one who's going to talk about this? This, she's the supply guru. So what do you want to tell us?
Well, so Jenna Wolkian obviously has taken on a lot of the lift for the past few years, so obviously can't thank her enough for that. This year, we are doing something a little new. I believe it's our eighth annual supply drive. And we are partnering with the Christmas Bureau, which is, you know, I think just helping us reach the community, partnering with them. They taught us a lot in this, you know, the crisis that we experienced this year with the fire and coming together just to support us and make sure we're being as efficient and reaching as many families as possible, which is obviously our goal. So they're helping us this year. We have two days planned for collection. I believe it's August 5th and 6th, one evening and one daytime. So, but I will let you know, you know, we've been doing this so long that families, they drop off all the time. They kind of just will knock on the door and say, you know, I'm saying, I know there's bags and things people come across or things they know we might need and they're donating them sort of continuously. So we also have a little bit of an inventory left over from last year that we've been organizing as we go. And then we have packing days that will, our support staff will come in and will keep pre-orders, which that's out there on the website. So, you know, obviously get the word out. It's been in the, you know, I believe the hive and the communication from the superintendent, it's out there. So there's a form, people will fill out, hopefully we can pre-pack and we plan for some of that. But of course, if people show up or even after we're done, if people, you know, move in or they call us, we say sharp, we get together what we need. So we have two days, the 12th and the 13th will spend packing. And then the 20th and the 21st will be pickup days. And again, we're offering in the evening and a day. And then people can also make appointments if that doesn't work for them for some reason. You know, we'll figure out a way to get them the supplies they need. And we also are doing the free haircuts again this year. We're partnering with a barber shop in town. Again, once families fill that out and let us know that they're interested, we organize the details based on those which of interest.
And I hope the word's getting out very well. I don't know how you're recognizing this, but we do get, do get a lot of anticipation.
Yes, we do. We're, we're, every year, we, I feel like the numbers go up a little bit. But, you know, we're, we're at about approximately 500 or 600 families that we help in some way, shape, or form with supplies and/or haircuts or whatever else they might need to get ready for school.
Any other comments or anybody's thoughts?
Is there anything that we can participate in? And, and before I even say that, thank you very much for being person, Jenna, for worrying everything, so you're here to offer.
I, I sent you all in the mail with the dates and anything, you know, obviously it's a great event, very heartwarming and great to be part of. If you want to help, if you're available any of those times, you want to pack a couple of backpacks, or even I think just create families as they either donate or come get supplies, it's just, it's great to be a part of. So, if you're interested, the information is there for you.
Thank you. And next, we, we kind of stumbled onto, we talked a lot about AI. And we know that there's a lot going on in school, but we happened to stumble onto a topic where there was some, an AI system, I believe to help kids with homework. Right? And we asked the question, turned out that they'd already done a whole bunch of research. So, you want to talk about that for next?
Sure. So, two years ago, I assembled a committee for artificial intelligence use in our schools because we knew that this was going to be something that we would have to address as a district. So, the committee is comprised of myself and the technology director, our elementary and secondary directors, and our library and media specialists specifically, and learning coaches because they are on the front lines of, of much of this work. So, we've been really just kind of trying to stay in front of it, even though it's pretty difficult because the, the technology changes so rapidly. This year, we piloted a few programs, three programs specifically, and the one that you had seen on 60 Minutes was Conmigo. And we also piloted Magic School and Bresk and just kind of put that out to teachers who are willing to, to, to try those things out because our teachers are using it right now. And much of it is free, right? The, there's a free platform for Magic School, but if you purchase it, there are additional perks and things that it can do. So, one of the things that we surveyed our staff is that we're finding they are using AI mostly for streamlining their workflow. And so, we're looking for, to have a balance between streamlining their workflow and also using it instructionally to support student learning. And so, we're very cautious, I think, about purchasing anything at the moment because the, the technology changes so quickly that you could be purchasing something for use this year, and then it just gets integrated into Google, and so it kind of becomes obsolete. So, and that's what we're finding is that Google is, and we are a Google suite school, that they are finding ways to take all of these great things that these programs do and just integrating them right into the Google platform. So, that's really where we want our kids to be with this, in Google, in Google classrooms so that the, the ease is there. We do have, what's linked here is our AI guidance document that we use as a committee, and we've shared it with our staff. And they can go through this and, and see some of the things. And we are actively updating this. You can see that our last update was in June. And one of the things is making sure that our teachers are transparent with their families about the use of AI in the classroom. And so, there's some sample language that they could use on their syllabus as well as making sure that we are drawing a clear line on the use of AI social companions in classrooms. Because right now, the research is showing that there, there is a detrimental effect on children for using those social companions. So, we wanted to be clear on that with our teachers. So, yeah, so this is a work in progress for sure, but thank you for asking.
Go ahead, Jeremy.
Just thanks for being ahead of this. I think, I think it's important for, you know, one of the things from the last NISBA conference, I know Tom and I talked a lot about is, we kind of thought, you know, part of education going forward, AI is changing everything, everything everywhere. I don't think there's an area in business it's not touching. So, I think part of education from here forward is going to be educating people on how to use AI confidently and appropriately. And I looked through the, the guides that you guys put together, and it's really smart. And I think it helps, it kind of strikes a big balance of students learning how to use it well and at the same time, being careful. So, no, I think it's important we stay ahead of it, and I think it's inevitable. The kids are already using it and know how to use it better than most. And so, I think that the key is that I'll be scared of it, but to embrace it, but at the same time, try to be cautious too. So, no, I appreciate you guys being ahead of it to the degree you can, and it is moving fast, so.
One of the things that, one of the sessions I went to a, a couple days ago was actually on media literacy. And they were talking about there's only, there's, I think, six or seven states where it's like a mandated class. And New York is not one of those states. But go, on what Jeremy said, I think it's really important. And I don't know, do we have a media literacy class or anything like this at that time?
So, we invent those skills. We have the computer science and digital fluency standards, which encompass much of those media literacy standards that you're referring to. Would it be a great class to have? Absolutely. We do have some classes, like our seventh grade class, that is digital literacy that our students take. That kind of sets that groundwork for use of AI, but also having, being online and having a social media presence and what that means. So, trying to inform our students earlier rather than later when sometimes the consequences are more severe.
It was really, it was a really good session too. They just talked about all the different things and how you can notice different, you know, if something isn't real or just how to think about, like, okay, think about where it's coming from, what it's trying to tell you, and all that kind of stuff. And probably like the earlier the better might be the best, you know? You can't trust everything you see or read, especially not on the internet, as I said. Thank you.
The, any thoughts? Okay, the other item on here is just a discussion of funding in terms of booster clubs and district responsibilities for extracurricular activities. There seems to be some confusion about the rules and are they changing or are they about the same? So, I guess, basic question is, and help me out if you have others, but what does a booster club provide? What does a school provide? And, I know, one of the things is extra equipment and costs or trip costs. Where does that money come from? So, you got specific instances or anything?
It was a good starting point. Okay. Even it, so just, just a, a quick breakdown of what, what happens. So, and we, and the Philly things too, right? They, they have a season. They have uniforms. They have away games, competitions. They have a, a trip to Arizona. And, and they have sectionals that they, they're great, so we know the state's turn. We've been, because we've spoken a lot about different extracurricular or co-curricular activities and funding and how it's funded and, and there. And it's maybe by design, and it may be a good thing. I'm not saying it's bad. It seems that, that these things are in a certain way siloed, right? There doesn't seem to be like one set of rules for everybody. And I think that, that may be smart, not to have one set of rules for, for everybody because not all, not all athletics classes are the same. And so, I'm, I'm just, you have talked with, with moms and dads and students over the last few months. I'm, I'm kind of losing the thread on what actually happens and what expectations are among some dads with different types of things.
Joe, can I add to the question before you jump in? Just one of, a couple of things I've had booster club folks say to me, and I was part, I still am part of one of the booster club, girl, one athletic team. I think just in the best we can as a school district, clarity about the, the school pays for X number of tournaments, X number of trips, uniforms every so often. And like, here's where the school's got it, and here's what the budget says, and here's where booster clubs, if they want extras, have to pick it up. Because I think that's confusing.
Yeah. So, I think to the point where our goal is to be consistent, right? So, consistent between athletics, consistent between the marching band and the visual and performing arts programs. Some of the changes that we've made this summer to make sure that there's that consistency is that you'll see now, whenever there's an athletic or a visual and performing arts field trip that comes to the board, it is the exact same form. There's no difference, right? So, you're selecting, the only difference is between who's signing up on that is that Mr. Campbellita is the director of athletics, PE and health, or is it Mr. Denton as the director of academic services, visual and performing arts? So, hopefully, that will help, you know, clarify the, the piece that we've heard, at least I've heard, on a regular basis, you know, why does athletics get this? Why does marching band get this and vice versa? So, our goal is to be consistent in the approach. We don't charge for events here in the district, no matter whether it's marching band or, or athletics. So, we're trying to be consistent so that it's fair across the, the board. Regarding the number of contests and what booster clubs should be paying for or agree to pay for, I mean, it's a joint collaboration between the coaches, our athletic department, or our visual and performing arts department, and their booster clubs. So, in how it should work, right? The district's responsible for uniforms. Now, there's a rotation, there's a cycle for that, and it's usually, you know, every range is between four to five years, depending on what Chris has. So, we do purchase the uniforms. That being said, we know there are a lot of groups that want to purchase their own through the boosters, or they'd like to have things changed up on a regular basis. So, we can do a better job probably clarifying that through the athletic department, through marching band, with all of our booster clubs and their presidents and leaders. So, that takes care of the uniforms. Other equipment, same thing. We know students want to have sometimes their own equipment, but it is a school-sponsored sport or is a school-sponsored musical group, we're responsible. So, we, we technically should be purchasing. It's probably not going to be the top-of-the-line, you know, lacrosse stick that an individual student wants, but if, if we, we have the ability and we should be purchasing as needed through the athletic department budget. Regarding trips, you know, it's going to vary by sport or group because of the fact there are different requirements, different number of contests that are permitted based on the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. So, whether this has happened in the past, this is the way that I look at it, and hopefully we can all agree moving forward. The way I see it is if there are, you have a certain number of regular season, you know, what I would consider the meets that you compete in, depending on the sport, and then there are also these extra tournaments, right? So, there's a number of, there's a, there's a point that is, there's a value that's assigned to each of those to meet NISBA requirements. And so, I see it as anything that is within the realm of NISBA, that we would be meeting our point credential, the district's responsible for. So, if, you know, you're allowed to have five tournaments, let's just say if I pick a sport, and you're allowed to have 15 meets, home or away, then we would be responsible for those entry fees if there is an entry fee. Where things get a little bit, you know, questionable is you have overnight events. Overnight, the district has typically covered overnight when it relates to sectionals, playoff events, state championships, all states for music, anything that's rising beyond the quote-unquote sectional level. So, I see it as that, that way too. So, if there is a team that wants to do a tournament and it's a good distance away and they can't drive down the back in a day, that would be something that we'd be asking the boosters to work with the coaching staff, or the coaching staff would be asking the boosters to work with them if they choose to stay overnight, similar to what we do with the marching band programs. Those larger events that they travel a state or two away, we need, we need help. Otherwise, the district is going to be, you know, covering the cost, pretty significant cost for rooms and all of that for, for rooms. So, again, to simplify it, if it's a part of their regular season and it's not extravagant where we're traveling like, you know, hundreds of miles, because we can find tournaments within a reasonable area within New York State that will still give us the competition that we need in order to be successful. So, you know, we have to ask ourselves, is it a, is it a need or, you know, want, or is it just a nice thing to have as we work through those decisions? But that really should go through the athletic office, through the coach, or the visual and performing arts office, through the, the director.
So, a coach should be able to max out their points for their given sport, and the school covers those contests. But if in the maxing out those points, the coach in conjunction with the booster club say, hey, we prefer this tournament because it's better competition, but it's an overnire, even though we could go to this one locally, then there's going to be coordination between the athletic department and the booster club. Maybe the booster club wants to pick up the cost to do a tournament that wouldn't necessarily be what they have to do, but it's what they want to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Hey, Joe, I, I wasn't familiar with any of this before tonight, but just in listening to everything, and thank you for the detailed explanation, it seems like there are a lot of details behind all of this. You know, you mentioned sometimes the school district will purchase the uniforms exclusively, but then sometimes booster clubs want to, you know, purchase uniforms that are better quality or more often or whatever. There are trips that, you know, may not strictly adhere to the points that are collected, but a coach decides they want to do something different. So, it seems like there are a lot of details behind this. Is there anything in writing or any sort of overview that is provided to parents at the beginning of the year so everybody understands what the rules are and what the possibilities are as they're doing their planning for the year?
So, how it would typically work is if it would be, you know, the coaches working through the, I'll use athletics as an example. So, the athletic director holds the coaches' meetings where a lot of this information is reviewed. Now, we certainly can probably do a better job of creating single-page documents, uploading information so that it's readily available for those. It remains in the process of working through some of the fundraising expectations that will get added to the, the field trip request form so that there's a link and, and it's all right there for, for all of those that are looking to sponsor trips, whether it be through boosters or some other group or organization. So, that is in the works, but what happens currently, I'm not saying it's perfect based on, you know, what we're, what we're learning. All of that goes through the athletic office, the, through the coaches' meetings, and then the coaches are really the, the lead person that's working with the booster club and should be communicating that information. So, that's the process. Again, we can work to improve that process, which we are, we are doing. But I don't disagree with you that, you know, and there's been a lot of changes. The coach changes, a staff member changes that's directing something, and we have booster officers who also change on, on a regular basis. So, having a clear document other than what the athletic director, community So having a clear document, other than what the athletic director communicates in his PowerPoints and the forms that the coaches have, that is something that we're working toward.
So I, I think some of the confusion comes into who they like to take the spring trips. And in the spring, for the spring, really, usually when we have spring break and/or winter break, you can't get out here and play lacrosse or whatever on, on the field. So you want to get away. And you do a fundraiser, but your fundraiser may not get everything. So then, how do you get the rest of the money? And many times, because I've been, my kid plays lacrosse, so I remember the day as well, you ended up helping out with some. So that's allowed if they want to do it. If parents want to give money to the booster club, they can give money to the booster club, correct?
That is correct, yep.
However, you can't sell a kid, you have to pay to play.
Correct.
So if you want to give money to the booster club, go ahead and give money. And you can, you know, if you're, if you're, what, twenty thousand dollars short, and you've got twenty kids to go, then you understand roughly what it is. But the other piece of that is you can't leave kids at home because their family couldn't come up with the money. But as long as they're being covered, and I know we've had some, a couple of issues with band questions, but I also heard from a band that they never left anybody home from a trip because they couldn't afford it. So as long as it's voluntary and not a requirement, which I think has been the way, at least, I'm, I'm much more familiar with sports boosters than I am the band, but I think that's the way most of the sports boosters have been run, is it's voluntary.
Yeah, and that's what we, that's what we communicated. We don't have technically any jurisdiction over how the boosters do their, their work, but it's not hard to learn, you know, if somebody is not following that general premise because people report that to the director or the district office, and that's, that's the issue that we're trying to navigate. So, you know, what we've communicated recently with coaches, and Renee has done a lot of this with Chris and Chris, you know, when you're thinking about we're updating forms, it's confusing because it says individual cost. And so really, this, what's the cost for the team to do whatever trip that's above and beyond what the district's paying for? So we're trying to keep it more at that level because I think once you get tied in with, here's what the individual cost is, that's automatically, whether it's implied or, you know, intentional, people are going to assume that's what they owe. And then that's where, you know, some families can't, can't come up with that. And we know people have covered in, in years past the, the trips for those individuals, but one of the things we're trying to get beyond is families having to out themselves, that they need help. And that's so, we want people to be mindful of it, no matter what organization you are, that, you know, some people struggle and they're, they're not willing to put themselves out there, and so it makes it more difficult. And so then they're confidentially having conversations. And one of the things I think we have to all be mindful of it is the fact that, you know, we offer a lot of great things and we do a lot of extras. So let's be mindful of what those extras are so that we can make sure that all students are included.
And, and those conversations are part of what drove me to kind of, you know, to this, and to purpose and, and, and to chat. Because there, there are families out there, you know, they, they're like, to use your terminology, they feel kind of outed on this a little bit. And, and, and others have said things like, so, so, you know, our team does a fundraiser. And no one, no one ever says, because they don't have a lot to, you know, pay for it, but no one ever says, all fundraisers, there's always off-occasion. And at the end of the fundraiser, they, you know, they, they publish a list, who raised how much. And it's, you know, they either list them in Z or they list them on a spreadsheet, but books and novels and feels to, to people who, who don't have the financial or the thought to, to do some of these things, it feels like a ranking. And so there's, there's a little bit of sensitivity to some of that. And, and where, what, what caught, the, the question for me is, you said, if you answer, no, John, this is not a gadget, this is just, you need to kind of go through. You said, so if a, if a regular trip turns to an overnight trip, then, you know, you, you said, then, you know, we're on the hook for a lot more cost. I think that's part, for me, that's part that, that I don't present. I don't know how to respond to that when, when parents ask me that question. Right? I don't know what, what the district is, is actually going to pick up, and what the institution is from the district side and on the parent's side.
So when the, I mean, technically, when the board approves a trip, if we don't have the assurances that funding is there for the trip, then the, the, the action of the board saying, we're going to do this, it is now on the district. And so we're obligated to now carry through with that, or we have to, you know, come back and say, this trip's no longer, you know, approved to happen, and that creates a mess. So we approve it, we, we know that that, it's going to cost, you know, however much it's going to cost.
And, and to Chris's point, I'm, I, I don't know how, how well known that is. I don't know if there's, that says that somewhere, if there's something the parents can think of. I had three different, three different families, just over the course of the last six, lots of different times, to this day or later, saying, you know, if I had known that you were going to need to fundraise for, for three years, for, for my son to participate in this thing, we probably would have had to do something else. We just didn't know this was coming. And, and so, and that, you know, people are responsible for their own decision, and, and I'm not suggesting that fall back on anyone else, the university or anything. I'm just wondering how much people know I had to.
Well, I think, and I'll be dirty, you, you've seen the boosters, but I don't perceive that there's an ongoing problem with the athletic booster clubs. Have we had any complaints from them?
There, maybe not the booster club, but there have been parents that have complained about the cost for some of these trips.
And I've definitely heard from a couple of booster club presidents, just not, not a complaint, but a request for clarity. Like, why is the booster club picking this up? You know, and I think some of the dispute comes from, you know, maybe it's sectionals, and the school says you can go out the same day, you don't have to spend the night, but maybe the parents in the booster club or the parents of the athletes say, well, we prefer them to get more rest and go and stay the night. So I think that's a call that maybe the booster club has to make. Hey, if you prefer your athletes to get more rest and get out there Friday night before the Saturday night event, the school has decided it's only willing to cover the Saturday trip up and back, and then the booster club's got to come up with that. But I, I, I don't think there's a complaint there, it's more of a clarity. Like, when are we picking it up and when is the school picking it up? And I think too, the booster club presidents probably need, each season, a re-education of what they're supposed to say. Because I've been in a lot of like, here's the preseason meeting, and the booster club president gets up to talk, and I don't know that they're always talking like we need them to in terms of, hey, guys, we're going to do some fundraising, we want you to participate, here's what the booster club is covering. I think a lot of times if we're not careful with our language, it can feel like pay-per-play. So, and I think that might just be like, booster club presidents need to understand how they're supposed to communicate those things. I think honestly the issue is clarity and communication.
So you need to bring up a good point. So just like we had the coaches meeting with, you know, Chris had the coaches meeting with all of the coaches each season, the same thing probably should happen to some extent with the boosters. I think that's a good point, and we can make note of that and put that practice into, in the play at this point, just to make it a little bit easier with communication. Because, you're right, the more people that are involved, the more chances that, you know, like telephone tag, you know, and it gets, so, might as well hear from Chris or Chris.
Curious question, is there a cap that we can contribute to the booster clubs?
No, I mean, they, I mean, anybody could contribute whatever they want as a donation. I know a lot of places, a lot of groups do take donations, but that's, that's up to them.
Yeah, there should all be five ones each.
Well, they have to be separated from each other, right?
So I don't know how many booster clubs are five ones each.
They both have mine.
You can, that's great if they are. So, so if the boosters are doing, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, you're fine.
You're next. So if the boosters continue to do what they are doing now, they're okay, because they're not forcing people to pay, but they are taking contributions and a fundraiser.
I think that depends on the booster organization. So I think we have to do, we have to clarify.
Okay, so you got it, right?
Yep. Chris needs to meet with, Chris and Chris need to meet with the boosters, depending on the season, and communicate the same message to everyone so that we can be confident that is true of what's happening. I think you're right, the majority, that is the case, but I do know of situations where families have reached out and said that's not the case. And again, we're not in a place to dictate because it's not our organization, right? But it's hard to, you know, there's a, you know, a semi symbiotic relationship between the district and boosters in making sure that the right message is getting out to, to our families.
Involved people, we know that lots of times claims are made that are not well-balanced. Because we face them with stuff all the time here, or claim to be waiting at the district that are, you know, low the runs.
I would agree a hundred percent with that, but I can tell you that with confidence that I wouldn't be saying that if I didn't have evidence where some people actually received the bill. And so that is a problem that we have to work through.
Yeah. Wait.
Um, just real quick, I, I think the important thing, I guess, to get across is for people to think of it as a team. Like, when the Tilly Week's team is going to, did you say Arizona? Arizona for the tournament, it's not, it, the Tilly Week's team needs to raise twenty thousand dollars or whatever the amount is, not, you know, ten dollars per two hundred kids on the team or whatever those numbers work out to, it is a team. And I know it's, it's kind of similar to a lot of things because there are certain parents or families or whatever that are able to be more active in groups, you know what I mean? Like, if you have a kid that's on the baseball team and you could go and work the concession stand every game, that's great, but not every parent can do that, you know, or, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a group, it's a community, and it's the team or the group in general that needs to, I guess, raise those funds or come together to meet those needs to take those extra trips that are outside of the normal, you know, going to Liverpool for a game, you know, that type of thing.
So when, like, we start to see something in writing, very quickly?
I would say by the end of the month, we should have something in writing, having shared in a Friday letter, and then I can also let you know when both directors schedule meetings with their twelve booster groups.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is possible, Joe, but maybe helpful if Chris or, or Chris could say, you know, for specific teams, like a lacrosse team, wrestling team, you have X number of points. The district's going to cover everything within the region, you can do one overnight trip or whatever. And then if you want to go beyond that, or you want to go to a different one, then the, if there's just some kind of like bright line, because I think, I'm not saying it's inconsistent, I think people just feel it is, because I don't know.
Yep. And I, I believe that is in, that is communicated to some extent with the coaches.
Right.
Whether people feel like it's the way that it needs to be, what I just said you is what I think it should be, and I can certainly communicate that. I do firmly believe that if there's regular season up through, you know, as I mentioned, there's the state championships, it's our responsibility, right? They're, they're competing for us. It's the bigger extra things that if it's not within the scope, that's where, you know, it's somebody else's. I mean, other than, you know, we can work with entry fees and things like that, but like, we just can't, we'd be, we'd be sending, you know, students to overnight trips, you know, all the time, and, and, you know, that would be a little bit excessive. But we, we recognize the experience that gives students too.
Right. And I, I was going to wrap up with where I began. The siloed approach may be just fine, right? Different activities do different things. But Jared, he hit it, it's the expectations, right, ahead of time. Parents are starting to know as much as possible, you know, what's coming up. And we publish that, we put that in a Friday letter.
We will. And we'll, we'll put it right on the athletic webpage once we, if you're proud of visual and performing arts webpage, just to make sure it's out there for everybody. We're not, we're not interested in hiding anything.
I, I was just, just one final point. It seems to me that through the years about hearing about all these clubs and boosters and things like that, that the activity of a lot of these things occurred all year, not just during the season when students are participating. There's a lot of preseason work that goes on and a lot of things throughout the whole year. So maybe, you know, just, you know, for your consideration, when you're putting the guidelines together, maybe, you know, including that a lot of these things are year-round endeavors and getting the word out well in advance so groups can plan.
Herb, thank you.
So by and large, I do think, you know, there's been a lot of kids taking a lot of good trips. And I, when I read our kids, you know, in the paper, they have this all-section team. And when I read some of those kids, they'll ask, you know, what was your most memorable? A lot go, well, on our spring trip, it was a great bonding experience, and we saw this, and the team came together. So don't want to deny kids that kind of opportunity. And I, I really don't want to get into a, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Well, I mean, I do want to do, and if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Because I think one situation is, is casting a shadow on others unnecessarily in a little bit. Because I think by and large, the other clubs, and, and I'm sure parents are contributing money, I used to contribute money, but I do think that the kids are benefiting, and I don't think kids are being left out. And I think parents are happy to help out other kids when they need to.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see that as a big issue. So I, I, but, but clarity is good and communication is good, so. Okay. So, Chris, you want the last word? Because you said final point, and I gave a, I jumped in on you.
No, no, um, no, thanks, Vic. Great discussion.
Anything else? Well, I'm sad to say that we saw the board education into executive session discussing employment history, what particular person managed to lead to specific student placement and/or program that would otherwise disclose confidential personally identified student information. Don, Tom, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. We'll be in exec. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Megan, and you get to go home early.
Recording stopped.
We don't have the paper.